Joining us tonight, you know, I know this takes a lot of your time. You know, to come here and sit on a meeting. I know a number of you are on a lot of town meetings. I just saw a few of you Monday night, you last night, so I thank you for taking more time out of your week to sit on this meeting. So just to backtrack, you know, this process has been going on now for almost two years. From the time that you guys were chosen to be part of this advisory group. And the advisory group in my eyes was put together to kind of assist myself, Jen, as well as M A P C on what the surveys would look like, what the plan would look like, what kind of data and information we'd be looking for. Kind of, you know, help us as well manage the project. You know, you guys were a huge help during the process of the public meetings, and so I just want to thank you. And I think this meeting might be one of the most important ones because now that we do have a draft document of the master plan based on the the four public meetings we've had and, you know, I you miss if I didn't thank Lauren and Dawn and Anne and, you know, Jen, who sat in on some of the survey subcommittees as well to kind of go through the survey. So we weren't all, I think we learned our lesson after the first meeting we had. So you all should have received the draft, the draft master plan that was sent over by M A P C. Like I said in my email, I have not gone line by line, word by word. I think I got to page one hundred and twelve last night. And then today I just was able to skim through it because I just wanted to be best prepared of what the rest of the document looked like. It's a very long, long document, so I totally understand if you didn't have a chance to read it. I think some initial, I think, and I want to say this in the best way possible without knocking the work. I'm a tad disappointed. Jen and I were speaking today about that. Disappointed in the formatting, some of the content. I don't think an everyday reader would go through this and, and I don't know how many people, you know, will go, I think committees, boards will use it as a tool moving forward to make any, you know, any new rules, right? Bylaws and things like that, and importantly, internal staff. I think this is a very important tool for us, but I found it very hard to read. I felt like the survey information was all really great, but I didn't think it needed to be put in the document the way that it was. I would have liked to add more actionable items, more goals, more strategies. And I sent you over a few master plans that Jen came across. And I've seen other ones in the past in my time in Mole, I worked on theirs as well. And it was just less text, not even more graphics, but I felt like there was just more beef to the report. I feel like a lot of this is a lot of data driven. And I would like to see more actionable items that reflect what we heard in the public process and the survey. So I'm going to stop there and see if Jen has anything to add. And then I can kind of talk about how I was envisioning this meeting. And it might be we go around and I just get initial feedback from you guys and we decide, okay, what are the next best steps? But yeah, Jen, do you have anything to add?
So I'll preface this by saying I I have never worked with a master plan. So I'm kind of looking at it from maybe a different lens than some people on the call. And I hope that all of you tell me that I'm super wrong and that you love this because this is the result of so much work. And I think Erin and I feel a little defeated right now. But I I looked at other master plans. Again, I don't look at these all the time. And I saw things that looked like this, which is a goal, who's responsible for the goal? How are we going to measure the goal? Stuff like this. And this is Norton, right? And then I found this one from Natick and I just Googled. I didn't look these up for any particular reason. Again, there's a distinct goal. There's some info about the goal, who's leading it? Maybe a little bit of a timeline, what your metric is, right? And then I looked at this and I legit hours with me and my red pen and I I finally had to stop. It is very, very, very difficult for me to read. Again, I I am not used to looking at these, so maybe this is fairly typical, right? I I just, it was too much and it was just not what I expected, I guess, is the way I would say it. Aside from the fact that it needs a good proof too. So aside from that concern, I also wanted to think about and hear the feedback. So for these goals, right? Who decides that it is going to be a goal? This is what kind of M A P C extrapolated from maybe the the data. And is it us that says, yes, this is going to be a goal in our master plan? And I, and in looking at these, and again, I I didn't get to finish. Some of them are, you know, like one of them is preserve Wakefield's natural resources. Right? That's great. That's a very general goal, but that's a good goal. But what if, like, do we make that decision that Wakefield wants to preserve natural resources? And the only one that was kind of controversial maybe that I came across was about, what was it? The the permit, the special permit, eliminating special permit process? Right? I don't know a lot about the special permit process, but I feel like maybe that's a conversation. Do we want to eliminate the special permit processes or what have you? So who is making, who is deciding that it is going to be a goal for Wakefield, I guess, is the other question that I had. Not necessarily a problem with this, but you know, this page has maybe fifteen goals on it, which is great in one section. And are we blessing all of these goals or ones that we want to at least try to attain? So that was my other question, aside from, I just think it's really difficult. But again, I'm not a planner and I hope that you all tell me that you love this.
I also just wanted to share one other plan that was done by the same, you know, a lot of different groups you can use. You know, private consultants and things like that. This was done by M A P C and actually was done by our consultant. And even here, it's kind of, it's text heavy, but it's laid out like what the goal is, what the strategy is, what the recommendation is. And we do actually have that in our climate resiliency and sustainability chapter. But I just find this a little easier to read and kind of plug through. I can just see like a checkbox checkbox here. So I just found it very interesting and why, you know, ours kind of looks the way it does when work similar has been done in a different community where it's a little more clear cut, I think. So I think, and Jen makes a good point about the goals, who decides these lineup? And I did hear back from a a member of the advisory group who can attend tonight saying, wants it to be make sure that these goals are a reflection of what was in the survey and the public process, not just what the consultant thinks. And and some of them may be planning best practices and I'm all about that because we have to think differently, right? We have to think of innovative things, but at the same time, we want it to stay true to our community, which I do in defense, think there is some some great ideas and touch upon and build off what people said in the public process. So with that being said, I kind of want to turn it over to this group and get your initial thoughts. And after Jen and I have spoke for a while, there is a raised hand, so we're not doing that awkward, like I'll talk, you talk type thing. So if you want to raise your hand, then I'll I'll call on you. You know, again, I think Jen and I can, I am not here to rip the whole plan apart. But I think we're here to get some, you know, feedback that we can work with. So with that being said, all right, Nancy is ready.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all after some some time.
Yes.
I, you and Jen, Erin, you and Jen put it much more elegantly than I was thinking of it. I felt like they buried the lead. I I thought, well, what, wait, wait a minute? And I tried. I I confess I didn't spend a whole lot of time with it, but I thought, oh, a summary. Oh, great. I'll start with the summary. And I got just about nothing on its summary except process. And and sort of, and then I started flipping through, again, admittedly not reading very carefully. But I thought, I don't, I don't know where the casual reader or even the earnest reader would go to see. What is the recommendation? What did the town collectively indicate are the are the areas that we really want to focus on? Where was the most enthusiasm? Which were the ideas? And go by goal and then, and then it would be lovely to get some advice on implementation. But those were the, I I found it a head scratcher. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't come away with it thinking, well, good, this, here's a roadmap that we can use to go forward.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Just took that down. Julie.
Hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, it, the way it is now, it's almost double the the length it should be. It's not ready for prime time. I don't think the town should see it yet. I don't feel like even a lot of it reflects Wakefield. We're a town. They keep referring to Philadelphia. A lot of the photos aren't of Wakefield. They they talk too much about the process of where we started and that's pages and pages and pages, and that's not important. This should be a guide moving forward. It doesn't need to reflect how we got to where we're trying to present a report. That part is a great summary, doesn't need to be in here. The last master plan almost never got used and it was much, much shorter than this. People won't use it. Boards won't use it. It's not clear. It's not concise. It doesn't give you any guidance. There was one email, Erin, I just sent you, it talked about Foundry Street. I think it was on page twenty nine. I don't know what they were talking about on Foundry Street on page twenty nine. It's like, we didn't talk about that. I can't, let me pull it up on my, if I don't use my Mac, it shuts off on me, so let me hold on a second. Page twenty nine.
I'm sharing, Julie. I'm sharing. I was called to twenty nine.
And they talk about our population as if in the last. Yeah, and it talks about Foundry Street. It's like, where did that come from? Because Foundry Street, most of that land has been purchased and is going to be developed. And what are they talking about? We didn't, did we talk about this?
This is environmental justice?
Yeah. So they did talk about this again as like background information, so environmental. See, I would know that because I work with that, right? But the everyday reader would have to be like, what's this environment?
What is that?
So it's an area where, you know, lower income than the average income minorities where you can apply to get grants and things like that to support the town.
And so just an area of of the community?
Environmental justice area of the community. Yes, yeah.
Foundry Street?
So that information I have on my notes is not even correct information.
I know. That's what I mean. I would be embarrassed with this.
The actual area now is Audubon because after the census, that information changed, so.
A report on our population as if it's been sort of stable. It hasn't been. In the past ten years, it's gone up dramatically and it stopped at twenty twenty. That that wording works to their benefit because they want us to keep developing and and the M B T A stuff and all that that's on our horizon. I I think we won't get the type of feedback we want if we think even within a week or a couple of weeks, we could post this. It's 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 much too long. It's all over the place. The pictures, I wish they represented Wakefield. I Googled other communities that M P A C has worked on their master plans and some of the pictures are the same. And I think that's just lazy. And comparing us to Philadelphia and other aspects of our community to other cities sprinkled throughout the report is is not valuable information for us. We're not Cambridge. And again, it's completely missing next steps. It it would not act as a guide for the Z B A or the planning board or the town council. You can't say, I'm going to turn to page seven because it gives us guidelines. There are no decision maps. Maybe if we're if we're trying to solve a problem, they could include some some ways to get there. They certainly work with other communities that have been successful, facing some of the same decisions and processes that we will be. And it really isn't something that a regular person could use the way it's presented.
Oh, I completely agree. It's just not very clear, clean, like the example Jen showed with Natick. And I know Norton does the two calls out who, you know, who's going to be the lead in this, who's purview does this fall under? You know, this one even has a support, like who can support this this goal? You don't, yeah, it it does. It's not helpful, so.
Can we agree that it's not ready to post for a public?
Oh, yeah, I think Jen and I.
I would rather, I would rather not.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I will say it's very difficult to work. They have this like timeline contract. It's going to be a conversation to get this where we need it to be, but I I I don't think it's.
No, it's not close.
I mean, we all have jobs and we all have to follow guidelines and we're all, I was a teacher. We've given manuals and guidebooks and things. I would never use a document like this. Can't find anything. And it's it's repetitive too. Some of it's repeated three times.
Yep, completely agree. I'm going to give the floor to someone else. Thanks, Julie. Anne, you're up next to the hand.
Okay, thank you. I agree about the goals. It's like, where did they come from? What are they? And then I I found a lot of the information very vague and not very like specific. It's kind of like these broad ideas of that aren't particularly helpful. I also had an issue with some of their wording that they used, like saying two thousand combined survey responses. That's very misleading. It makes it, it alludes that there were two thousand. People will read that and think that there were two thousand respondents and it was not two thousand respondents. It should be how many participated in each survey. So I I think that that's really inaccurate. I also would like to see for each survey, I can't remember which what demographics they asked, but I'd like to see like for each survey, what is the sample size? And what was the percent distribution for each question? And that could be done as an appendix? That that can be done as an appendix so that if people want to get that data that they can, and it could just be simply the questionnaire with the with the total percentage answers and then knowing.
Sorry, Anne, can you repeat that again? I just want to make sure I get these all in my notes. So you said, I was on the respondent, so you wanted to with the the demographics, sorry.
Yeah, so each each survey should have, should, as an appendix item, you could put the survey results in on the survey results. It would be the percent distribution for each answer in the survey. And then it should also have a methodology. When was the survey? You know, how was the survey distributed? What was the sample size? When was the survey live? When was the data collected? And then any demographic information, I can't remember if the surveys asked demographic questions or not, but it would be good to know like what is the age distribution of the people who participated in the surveys? What is the, you know, gender distribution? If we asked anything about section of town that they lived in, anything that we can gather to get a better understanding of who completed the surveys, I think is a is aids in the transparency of the data. Because a lot of this is going to be, a lot of these recommendations are going to be based on the survey data. Or they should be, I would think.
Yeah, we got all the demographic and I actually may noted that last night. I said, you know, they have like three or four pages about demographic information, but it doesn't say anything about like who took the surveys.
Right.
What the, or the surveys, but then also the demographics of our town. I don't think it really goes into quite much depth.
Yeah, I just want to know is where did the, who participated in these surveys, how many? It also said at the forums that it had four dozen, that it had two to four dozen. Did we have, did we have almost forty eight people attending any one forum?
We did, Julie. Yeah, we did. The most, I mean, at the most time, yes, it was forty eight people.
Okay, but it would be good to know like how many, how many attended each of the public forums broken down. I think that might be helpful. And again, these can be kind of attached.
That's what I said, like a supplemental document that people can like have, you know.
You said that when you're looking at the recommendations, where do these recommendations come from? You know, is it, is it a reflection of our community or not? And let people draw the conclusions that they will.
Yeah, because I find if you go deeper into like each section where the goals are, they have the community consensus on the table and it has like the percentages. Like, I don't feel like that's all needed at all. I think that should all be in a different document or at the bottom. You know, because that's great that people feel that way, but I'm here to know what like our goals should be, you know, based on what those people said.
Yeah, exactly. And then I think that the goals, if we had like, everything that you've all been saying is that the goals with, okay, here's the goal and it's a concrete goal and it's actionable. And then what are some ideas? So it's, that's where I think the innovation from M A P C can come in is like, what are some ideas to to, you know, maintain, you know, one thing that people said is they want to maintain the architectural character of the town. So what are some ways that we could do that?
Yeah, like here, goal one, one, this is Norton. Modernize the town zoning bylaws, it means the town priorities and growth and preservation. And then it has, you know, these, you know, four different strategies. And then a different goal for the land use and things like that. And then it goes into more detail. Yeah.
And I mean, and this is a document that is meant to be, you know, Jen was saying she's not a planner, but I don't think that the the idea is not for planners to be, they're not the only audience for this. This is really so that we as a community can understand what are our town priorities and and where do we want to go and how do we get there? So I think it needs to be more user friendly and maybe there's this, this document can be, you know, for for the people doing planning, but it doesn't even sound like that really is helpful, Erin, so.
No, it's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's too much.
Maybe the the stuff is all there. It's just the way it's presented right now. It's just.
It's too, it's like way too, it's just way too much for.
Yeah.
They should be very directive. They should be taking the data and being very directive. Here's a goal. Here's what we heard. Here's how we implement it. Here's some ideas for implementation.
Thank you. Yep. I think we have four, five of us on the same page right now. All right, John, you're next on my thing.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Erin. So, yeah, I had a similar, you know, reaction to everybody else that's already spoken about it being very wordy and very dense and and not well organized. So what I did, I printed out this summary table for like the one chapter on, I just chose the transportation section and looked at the way it was organized. I guess I have like three questions or three suggestions, maybe it would help, it would help reorganize it. It seems like they're kind of mixing.
John, can I interrupt you to give me the page number and I'll show that so everyone can follow with you?
Uh, it doesn't have a page number on it.
Come on, there's so many page numbers. All right, I will, okay, I'll try and find.
It's this long, it's a landscape chart. It shows like the, it's broken down by higher consensus.
Is it an appendix?
It's after fifty two, but I don't know if it is actually called fifty three.
We're looking at this? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, keep going. Sorry.
So, you know, I just looked at it. They've got, they're kind of mixing two categories of information, it looks like, which is kind of the, I read a lot of engineering reports that break it up into existing conditions and then proposals. And it looks like they're mixing up the survey data on what people thought were the issues or the problems. And then what the, what the recommendation was to follow up on that existing condition or problem. So, you know, if I was sitting down with M A P C and asking them, you know, questions about reorganizing, then I would ask them to confirm that, number one. And then come up with a, you know, a table that really broke this up into those two or three major categories. Just to make it, just to make the data and some of this summary action information a lot more readable. So that was, that was my first, that was my first take on how this information was, was, you know, organized. And then I think I have a similar question. I think Anne already talked about this, about coming up with another table of what the number of responses were to like each of the chapters, because we had public, we had public meetings on most of these major topics. So to know that for this particular chapter or this particular area of the plan, you know, you had two hundred and fifty five people respond to the survey and some kind of just a tabular summary of which questions that they ranked, you know? And I think, I think Anne already kind of covered that same territory. And then, you know, maybe we can hire Norton's technical writer to reorganize this.
No, Natick looks pretty good too. But then again, like North Rattings isn't the worst. I mean, it's not like as nice looking, but at least it's like, I don't understand what.
I mean, honestly, this looks like a draft table that somebody put together with.
I can't, yeah, I can't read it. I can't.
There's a lot of great information in there, but it's just, it's so dense. It's, you know.
Yeah, as I say, I'm, I think I left the meeting with Jen today and between this group, I think Jen got all our feelings out. I was just quiet because I was just very disappointed and.
I was very passionate this morning in Steve Mayo's office.
And I was very quiet, so I'm just very, I'm I'm disappointed, so.
We have, my last question is, do we have any more consultant time for them to work with us on reorganizing this?
Based on the timeline now? No, no, not really. I mean, they have time to make edits, but based on what I'm going to be sending back, which is not going to go well. It's not going to be enough time. I'm basically asking them to reorganize the whole thing. So I'll have to figure that out. I'll have an update for you guys once I figure out that. But thank you. That's all very helpful information, John. I think I have Rochelle next.
Yeah, so I definitely agree with everything that's kind of been said, the sentiment of tonight. Definitely disappointed to see such a large document. Heavy text for sure. There, you know, I mean, to me initially, as I scanned through it, it seemed to me like a very like traditional way to put together a comprehensive plan. Like, there's just much better examples and modern approaches out there to do it today. This is like something you would see, you know, forty years ago, just sort of just dense. I would have expected something from M A P C like a, like more like the Norton document. That is what I was expecting, which isn't even that great of one. But from from them, that's something I would have expected, just like with goals and like, you know, just the format, clear boxes and just easy, easier reading. So, yeah, disappointed. The one thing I do when I first look at.
And Rochelle, you're a planner, just so everyone knows. So you.
Yeah, I, well, I study planning. I'm not actually a planner currently.
Yeah.
But I I do have my masters in urban planning. So I studied these. I've put these together. And the first thing, one of the first things I do is I go to the implementation plan, which is on page two hundred and twenty two. And I look because that, though, the implementation and the key recommendations are what, you know, towns, cities and towns and and the departments and, you know, the residents, you know, they they look at throughout the years to sort of see, okay, are we making movement on these things? And what do we need to do? And and just by skimming this, it's just, I mean, there's two long term, you know, suggestions, which is kind of wild. And, you know, just like, like addressing vacant storefronts. Their recommendation is to refer to the town of Arlington and they, they give a link. You know, that's not really that helpful. So, yeah, I I mean, I definitely, we need to go back to them, but I'm super disappointed. I hope that they're able to turn something around that's a little more digestible, but I'm, I don't know. Given the contract we might have with them. But that's my two cents right now. I I will have more if I can read through this.
And Rochelle too, I had noticed with the recommendations as I was looking today, it's like all of them are together. And I would have loved to have seen them more broken up into the different topics because one thing, you know, if I'm looking for something for economic development, like I'm going to scroll through all this thing. I mean, a lot of them overlap, don't get me wrong, but it's just like, it looks like it's just thrown on that piece of paper and
Exactly.
Doesn't look organized at all. Doesn't look organized at all. Um, and so I was disappointed when I saw this.
And initially, there's no clear sort of understanding how they came to the short term. I'm assuming it's from the data or how they, you know, how they determine short-term midterm. It's gotta be from the data, but that's not like clearly described here. Um, it, it, you know, it just looks like they, they put everything that we've ever talked about and collected in here. And not, you know, sort of summarized it in any way.
All right. Thank you so much. All really good information. Um, I don't know who is next. Uh, Chris, Carol, I don't know. One of you can go.
I think it was Chris before I.
Okay. Chris, go ahead.
Okay, then I will go. Um, all right. So I got six points. So I'll go through them one by one. Hopefully that's not too many. The first one is, uh, Jen and Erin, don't be discouraged. I think the group did, uh, did a lot of work, is good information, is not presented the way we wanted to be presented. But that's not work wasted, so I want to make sure you, you, you the same way. I try to do that for work because, uh, people always get too down right at the beginning, but so that's point number one. Uh, two echoes a lot of what others have said, but in my words, the report feels more like a data dump, which is just a bunch of things being spit out to us and not interpreted in any meaningful way. Um, so that's number two. So tying into number three, my thought and as a brainstorm idea is if we don't have the amount of consultant hours to go through the whole thing page by page, maybe we ask for a executive summary type of document that would highlight goals, recommendations only, because that in reality is the only one that we're gonna really use. Right? No one is, well, I shouldn't say no one is gonna go back to the survey data, but if people want to see where the goals and recommendations come from, they can refer to a two hundred something page document and find the data necessary. I don't really see why the whole town need to go through each of the survey results one by one, because that really isn't the part that we need to comment on anyway, right? That's just, that's just data for us. So if we're short on dollars to get them to work with us, perhaps that's a stopgap to, to get, I don't know, maybe like a ten, fifteen-page document, just goals, recommendations that then can be tied to this, make it one that somehow they make it less draft-like. So that's three. So four, I think John pointed at table. I honestly don't really understand the difference between that table and what they are calling goals, because where they have goals, they end up listing the survey data next to the goals. So the goals doesn't even feel like goals to me. The goals are just another way for them to interpret that again. And then underneath the goals, they do have recommendations on the different sections. I think there's six different sections, six, eight. I don't remember the actual number, but compared to the other towns, and if we would use re- North Reading or North Andover, I don't remember which town that was. The one that also was done by M P C A or something.
And yeah, North Reading, yeah.
My point is, at the very least, even though the formatting in that one is not quite the best, at least they list goals, recommendations, and then everything is together so that you can link the recommendations to the goals. The way it is reported or represented in the one that we have, they list a bunch of goals and then they just have like a few bullet point underneath. Some of them doesn't even seem to tie well to the goals and they certainly don't, I don't think they align, address each point either. So that felt a little BS if that's the best way to put it, right? Cause it sounds like they're making recommendations on the generality, but not individual goals. So that would be another point. Graphic formatting, I mean, that was another one that noted, but I don't know if that's really the best use of our effort to correct. I mean, on page eighteen, the photos are green, which I have no idea what they're green, but you know, of all the things I'm gonna nitpick on, I guess I'm not gonna say they need to go and swap pictures at this point, right? So, I mean, otherwise formatting, yeah, definitely agree is, is pretty poor. It doesn't look too professional compared to, I think Amherst and, um, and Norton, right? So if that's not in the budget, in the hours to, it's almost like we need a marketing person who specializes in preparing a, a public document, right? It, what we have now looks like something that I will put together versus what my marketing, marketing team will put together as a proposal. If they don't have the right people to do that, I, I don't know if asking is really gonna get us far, so. But nonetheless, that's a comment and, and I guess the last one, the last one goes back to the goals. The way they have it listed, I, I mean, it's just, I don't know. I, I, the town doesn't need to see all the data to make comments. The town should be commenting on more dislisters' goals, right? So we collectively agree or disagree, whether the goals are right, and then the implementation of recommendations, whether we agree with that or not. Seeing the server data is great for those who want to see it. But, you know, it's not as if everyone is gonna study out of survey data and then make a, I guess, make a educated response, right? I, I feel like everyone is gonna respond to what they feel is important to them, not interpret the data and say, oh, sixty-three percent of people say this, so why don't we do this, right? So that's how I see, it might be more useful if we even just condense it to just goals and recommendations as the piece that the town can look through with maybe this as the, as a appendix to the smaller document.
Thank you so much, Chris. It's all very helpful. Um, it sounds like we're all on the same page here. But I like the idea about an executive summary. Uh, I'm looking at one right now as you're talking, um. And that's a really, like you said, a useful tool for everyone. Um, and yeah, we can get something like that. Um, all right, Carol, you're next.
Well, I have to say, I agree. I won't take long because a lot of people have mentioned points that I was gonna mention along the way and I really appreciate Christopher, your number three, which I was thinking similar is some, it feels like you could pull out ten to fifteen pages and the rest would be appendix. Um, I almost, my concern, my, my instant reaction to it was when, when, cause I know a little bit about the company is that uh, it looks very cookie cutter, um, and that was a concern, um, and it's not unique to Wakefield, um. I don't have an issue with them comparing us to other towns. I think that would be very helpful to some way to kind of understand how a suggestion or something another town had done could be a way for us to reach the goal. Um, but I have to say, I like the executive summary option. Um, I, I, I'm a consultant for my clients. If I don't do the job well, I'm asked to do it over. It's at their cost, not yours. Um, so that's something to consider. Um, but I think if we were able to pull out an executive summary and focus in on what they heard and how that's influencing the, what the town can decide to do. I think right now it's, it's a bunch of BS as there was explained area before, and it's really not highlighting what the town has told us what they want. It's way too dense. It's a, a huge amount of appendix information that can be pushed and people can get to. Um, but pulling out an executive summary, which would in essence be the master plan, um, is, is the, is the goal, I think, that we, we need to get to at this point, because there's a lot of information. A lot of, I think they almost color-coded it because they may in their mind felt it was too dense and that was the way that they felt they could separate out the detail of it. Um, I've never pushed that much information on one page and anything that I've ever prepared. In my thirty years as a consultant, I've never pushed that much information on a, on a page nor had a document this size. Um, and I'm concerned that they may be filling gaps that potentially that they thought they didn't have the data for, but they should have highlighted that. They should have said, look, the survey results, um, only reflected a cer- a smaller proportion of what the town. Maybe we need to look at a supplemental survey. How do we, how do we hear more from the town? Um, so I agree with the executive summary, um, point and think that they need to work harder to get to that point.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, Lauren.
Hi, um, first of all, just echoing what everybody else said, like I agreed with what everyone said. So hopefully into not repeat any other ideas. Um, my couple of things, I think in terms of like feedback to M A P C, as they take a look at the document, it's like understanding the audience, like you said, Erin, like the people that are most likely gonna, gonna actually be reading every word of this or people on our boards and planning committees and stuff like that. Um, and I know Carlos put a note, he was like, I've repeated things so people don't have to go back and find it, but those type of people are not the ones who are gonna be reading this document in the first place. I think it's the same thing with the use of photos and photos from other towns or Google or whatever. The people that need photos are not gonna be reading this document in the fo- first place. So I think it's just like, understand the audience. This is, uh, mostly for people involved in the work. And then to Chris's point, an executive summary is a great goal to help get feedback from Wakefield residents and then for kind of quick perusal in the future for people who are not necessarily involved in the work. Um, and then just with the line of like brevity and do not repeat things. Um, that, that, that's probably the big thing. I think we could eliminate a hundred pages, just not repeating.
Yeah.
Um, for just the sections formatted, um, I think in general, taking a look at the document and kind of making sure that it's following the same flow, essentially it's a table of contents where it's like land use and zoning, that's its own section. Housing is its whole own section. Um, I noticed that when it talks about, um, the kind of consensus themes, it breaks down housing into like a couple of different bullet points and I totally get that, but it really should be like one statement about housing in general. And then we should see all those recommendations under, you know, called out under the housing section and then in the implementation section the same way. It's like, I want all the housing stuff together. I want all the land use and zoning stuff together. So I think there was kind of two ways they were organizing information. One was the table of contents and those were like the chapters we followed, but then the recommendations had their own format. Um, so I think unifying that together and ultimately going with what the table of contents say. Um, in terms of the actual sections themselves, building off of Chris's, Chris's idea with the executive summary, I really did love how Norton committed to doing one page of context and the goals overview. That's enough for people, I think, to see that, give their comments and we have something to work with. Um, but then for the planners and people that wanna dig in, then we're clicking into the goals and everything. So I personally really liked the Nor- Norton's format when it came to each section, especially to support, um, that executive summary idea. And then um, the only other thing I, I, I liked about Norton's as well that I didn't really see in ours was in the beginning when they were saying, here's kind of how we're visioning this work and it had the kind of the color-coded for all the different goals and where they're showing up in Norton. Um, and, and how it was just coming together. It was kind of nice to see as someone who's not necessarily involved in all, all the work, to be like, oh, and Norton, they were, th- this is where all the goals are showing up and the, the, because this is red, I know it's this type of goal, or this is yellow, it's this type of goal. So that I feel like was something that could help. Um, exactly, like this whole section was just kind of visualizing the work and the recommendations for residents, which I think I, I personally found it kind of cool and helpful, um, especially as part of like some of the introductory information before you're actually getting into the goals themselves. But that could just be me. Um, I think that was it. And I did, I did actually try to do some copy editing, so I'll, I'll share it with you, but for, especially for the intro, at the very minimum, getting a lot closer to what they did for North Reading versus what they put together for us. So, uh, if they need, you know, that extra time where they're not doing their own copy edits, we have some initial ones.
Thank you. All very helpful. Making sure I got everything you said. Um, God, did you have your hand up? Uh, you did? Okay.
It was up and then I put it down, cause I, you know, it's all like I'm dissenting here, right? I feel like a lot of us are, uh, we're all on the same page, which is a good thing. Um, I mean, I, I, I think what Chris said really resonated, uh, pretty spot on. I especially like points one and three. I think one is one, we shouldn't forget that like they did put a lot of work into this, so it's not the end of the world. This is not the document we wanted, but it's one we have. Um, it, like everyone said, it's cumbersome. It really belongs more as appendices. Um, I like the idea of an executive summary. I think it's important just to, if we're gonna go that route, the why is gonna be critical. So I think establishing where the goals came from and how people weighed in to establish why those are the, say, top ten to fifteen goals. In some way, we need to make sure that gets communicated.
Thank you. Uh, Anne.
Hi, I just wanna kind of come back, cause everybody was saying so many great things. Um, but you know, what I keep hearing too is that you know, not, this not being unique to Wakefield, it seems cookie cutter. Um, and where did the goals come from and why is really important. This is gonna face a lot of scrutiny from people and we need to get, we need, we want the community to believe in this document. So we need to make sure that this is a reflection of our community's priorities and what we want and what our goals are and not the goals of, of anybody else, that it is all driven from what we gathered with this data with our community, so that, um, so I, I think that's the most important thing. And I think where, where M A P C can be helpful for us is in terms of helping us with the recommendations of how do we, how do we achieve these things that are the priority to our community. So.
Point. I, I, I completely agree. I think some stuff, I'm like, was just copy paste, unfortunately. Um, I think some stuff, you know, they probably did pull out the goals from what they heard from some of the surveys, even though it might have been said in other communities. You know, a lot of our, our communities around here, we have similar issues. Um, but yeah, it should be reflective of, um, of the community.
Yeah, there were things in there that I was reading the document. I'm like, really? I don't see the data in there. I don't see the data supporting what they're saying. So I just wanna make sure that this is a reflection of us.
Okay. Go ahead, Julie.
So feature trick, I used to cut and paste students' words and do a Google search and you could find if they were plagiarizing. And that's some of what happened. I'm, I'm not super concerned, but I am finding some mistakes, especially about Foundry Street, because I, it looks like whoever put this together did a lot of research on Wakefield and they cut and paste from various sites. On page, uh, seventy-seven, it talks about how Foundry Street is an industrial area. I don't think it is any longer an industrial area. Are we concerned? Cause I, how concerned are we about mistakes?
So that's what I've been really concentrating on, Julie, is I have found things that I know, for example, um, and I'm wondering where the, like the, um, where you saw that, if it was more de-existing.
I have found four or five mistakes about Foundry Street and, and they're saying completely different things about.
Yeah, I've noticed that too. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I've noticed that. I've made notes in my comments. Um, so I'm kind of the one, you know, I think a lot of the stuff they did, um, you could tell they went on our website, did research and things like that, but some of it may have been old information, which is I'm running into, like they don't allude to our mixed-use multifamily overlay district. Uh, when they talked about overlays, and so I have that in there. Um, so that's why, I mean, I'm not, I'm not personally ready for this to go out until I make sure that the information that we're putting out is accurate. You know, and it's an outside consultant, whether it's M A P C or someone else that's not from here, they're not always gonna get it right. So that's where it falls on me. And, um, and this group, if you see that stuff, please make note of it, but I, I noticed that as well.
I really liked Chris's idea, but if we just went with Chris's idea and we don't think about the intrinsic multiple layers of mistakes, I, I mean, that's. I I mean, that's gonna take hours just to find those.
So I have the same concern, Julie, is that I I love that idea. I I didn't think of it to just have them move forward with an executive summary, but that doesn't mean you can leave this the way it is as an appendix.
I don't have any intention of doing that. They need to fix up their their mistakes. I mean, we paid them to do this.
Go, it's gonna, we gotta go through all that. But like, that was my thought, like I I you like, you know, kind of like, you know, I I paid you to rotate my tires. If you only rotated three, then go back and do the fourth one. So I kind of feel like that too, like I'm sorry, we don't have the contract hours, but.
On the fourth tire, he put somebody else's tire on your car because we've got information here from other communities because I Googled it. And I can find the exact information in other M A P C pieces of work.
Yeah, so like the execu- using the hours to make the executive summary is an awesome out of the box idea I didn't have, but at the same time, that doesn't mean that uh they gotta still spend the hours on this too.
We're allowing incorrect information to be posted as fact when we know there are a lot of mistakes, so I don't even know how to deal with that. But I mean, we have to go through a few hundred pages to to each of.
Well, honestly, I want his first thing is to bring this document down because I think we've all agreed that two hundred and forty pages is pretty outrageous, a lot of repeats. Like I think he needs to start there and try to find ways to narrow down the information. Um, but I also agree that we need to make sure that the information is factual. I want this document that we have in front of us, I want it to be completely overlooked and reformatted. I think the executive summary um is helpful no matter what. Um, I think for the everyday user, but I would love for this document to um be completely reformatted, narrowed down. Um, so I I, yeah, I don't, I was kind of not feeling well about this today, but at the end of the day, like we paid them to do work, like Carol said, like this is, we paid them to do this and for me, it seems like again, it's some of it's a copy and paste job, which I, it does not make me too thrilled.
Can I also tell you, I um I sense at least three different writing styles in this document?
Yep, yep.
So that's an issue because if if this was given to other people to work on so that a person could be working on other things, that might, that might align with some of the mistakes and some of the plagiarism that we find. And um that's, that's.
Yeah, I have a note from today, um, page one ninety-seven.
I mean, at least three. I mean, there might be five different writing styles in here.
Um, the sustainability and resiliency chapter, I was saying to Jen today.
Oh, it's awful.
Oh, you think it's awful? Well, I was gonna say, at least it has recommendations and bullet points and strategies instead of these tables we're looking at.
Yeah.
Um, which I thought was helpful over um some of this other stuff, but that was someone else that did that work. So again, a different writing style, but at least I found.
And you can also Google, Google parts of that, you'll find it in other plans.
Which again, I I think some communities, we have a lot of the same um concerns and issues and some of the recommendations may be similar to some of those communities, but I agree, we wanna make sure, you know, we're addressing what people wanted to see or improved or uh like about the town um as well, so.
So what we need direction on then is I loved Chris's idea. But what we need direction on is what do we do with this draft? What are our next steps?
Okay, I'm gonna um, I thank you, Julie. Um, I have, now we have a few other people's hands up. Amy.
Yes, yes, yes. All of it. Um, you know, I I I'm also an engineering consultant. I deal with a lot of reports and um I'd have to give critical feedback. And one of the things I've learned is when you still need to work with someone and get a product out of them, you've also gotta be realistic about what their tools are and kind of work with those to say, all right, we got a problem, we gotta solve it with the resources that we've got. We can't accept non-factual information. Absolute, like number one. Number two is when I look at some of the other plans that they've created, I mean, some of the other ones created by others, I see a lot of great stuff there. We can maybe pose those as examples to them about the conciseness that we need, but I also look at some of the other plans created by M A P C. And the format of them is just a heck of a lot easier to be able to comprehend. And even if it's some more concise, here's a goal and here's our bulleted list of recommendations. If that's our initial, this is what the goal is, is we need you to take a pass and really just cut things back, get us into some more basic format here that we can work with and use your graphics to actually show, okay, who are our responders? What of these goals? Who do they represent in our town? And then give us a list of, I I can't, I can't deal with, here's one page that has goals and then another page that has inconsistent recommendations and they don't tie together, so I can't even tell how which recommendation ties. So a goal, some recommendations don't even, um, some of the goals don't even have recommendations associated with them. And so to me, there seems to be some basic structural pieces that they have proven they can do in other documents. So it's like you, you've got the tools, M A P C, you've done this before in other places. Can we get you to at least start by restructuring this to give us um a workable, here's a problem, here's a solution, as being their recommendations. And it might, it's not unheard of that you have to go through a couple of drafts, right? And we could as a team and particularly you, spend a lot of time going through and really editing every single thing. And every once in a while, you just gotta stamp it, revise and resubmit. Or maybe rejected. Um, and you know, so I wonder if you, if we set, these are our, you know, this is our absolute no-go, this is what our goals are and our recommendations of how you improve it. Resubmit it. We can come back together and go through this again and give you some guidance.
Mm-hmm.
But um I get concerned with the, I know there's a timeline of when we were trying to accomplish getting this available to the town, but right now, it feels a little unrealistic.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's not a project I'm working on right now too is um, I just wanna make sure it's in a place that I feel comfortable putting out to the public as well. Um, and so um, that they're reading a document that won't be changed a million times too. So not that it's ever gonna be the end-all, be-all, you know, you will, we're gonna, that's why we have public comment period, but I would like them to see um something that is as close as it could be to what the final document's gonna look like. So I don't think we're there yet. Um, so, all right, thank you so much. Uh, Nancy, you you had your hand up, hand up.
Just um really quick and Amy, I appreciate what you said and and it's um, what I was thinking about was that there is reputational risk to this organization um for um, I I mean, there's no one on this call who's been pleased with this document. And I'm sorry to see uh Erin, you and Jen so frustrated as you are. Um, I think uh I think that the things that are just outright errors shouldn't count against uh our time, our contractual time. I think they should clean things up that are wrong and we shouldn't um be um we shouldn't bear that, they're simply, they're simply wrong. Uh, and I think that they should be concerned that they've um, we repurposed uh data and information and ideas and content that they've used in other plans to such an, to such an extent as it sounds like they have in this one. And uh, I don't know, it just if they, if they were on this call, I think they would be um well, stunned probably and and um defensive. But I think, you know, to Amy's point about you go back to people and you you find a way to kind of negotiate next steps and agreements and I um with an incomplete document and I think I think some of their errors and some of the, the fact that they've done better work for other communities um, seems like something that could be held up to them.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
That's all.
Thank you so much. Uh, Christina, have you had your hand up for a while?
Um, yeah, and then I got kicked off, so.
Oh, okay, you're up.
No, no worries. Um, the only thing I wanted to add, um, so I'm an occupational therapist by trade, so when I saw this, it's just very visually inaccessible to, I would say, many populations. Um, not just volume-wise, but the font is, I mean, I've never seen a document with font that small. And when I was actually zooming in, I don't know about everybody else, but I had to zoom into a hundred and fifty percent on one of the pages just to read what was there. And I think it was that page fifty-three. Um, I mean, we can't be asking people to do that. It's just, and I have good eyesight, but there's plenty of people who do not. And just to ask them to do that is, I I just find it very inaccessible to read for a lot of a lot of reasons. So I do think when we go, when you guys go back to them, like the consistency of the size, like it has to be at least size twelve font or twelve fourteen or whatever it is, like there can't be more than X amount of text. Like when you read that Norton one, you can read it. It's spaced out. It's really nice. And for this document to be two hundred and forty-one pages and so super saturated with font, um, I just found that really concerning because the other ones were a hundred and thirty pages, but they were all spaced out and you can read them, so.
Really good point.
Yeah, so just in terms of like that font size, because it's gonna be hard enough to get somebody to read this whole thing, but it's really visually just not there. Um, so yeah, that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you so much. That's a very good point. I really appreciate that.
Yep.
Um, Jen, I think you're next.
Okay, so I just was curious about Anne and Theo's perspective as the liaisons to the Town Council and Planning Board. Kind of my initial question of how how are we endorsing that these are our goals? So as an example, I just looked real quick. One of the goals is consider the Civic Center and the new high school as two options for transformative, transformative civic um civic facility projects. Which is, which is great, but maybe and and that may be based on survey data, but maybe that's not the goal. Maybe the goal is to I don't know, transform the town hall into a something or other, you know what I'm saying? Like that, maybe this isn't a great example, but uh who and how are we saying for the executive summary, these are the goals that we want?
I I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the Town Council, but I would anticipate that the document would come to us and we would look at it and we would look at it as, you know, these are the priorities from the town. These are priorities that are from the, from the town of what the town has told us that they want. And let's see how we can work, work to achieve those, to to achieve those goals and implement them. Um, knowing that, you know, if it's a, you know, if it's not feasible, if it's not feasible, then that's, I think, probably our job to come up with alternatives, I would think, of being able to reach a goal of, you know, community gathering, if that is something that, you know, um is it tried to work within that structure?
So you would be comfortable accepting all of the goals that are in this document?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I think that, you know, when this comes before the Town Council, I think you're gonna have a lot of people who are gonna be scrutinizing the words in the document and questioning where did these goals come from? So it's, it's a lot easier to accept a goal if you know that it's from, this is what the community has said that they want. That they've said what they want. But I think that the key is, is that how, how it is to be implemented could be based on recommendations from M A P C, but the implementation is ultimately up to the town of Wakefield to decide. How, you know, what is feasible, what is doable and um you know, uh like saying that they want something that is, you know, five hundred million dollars, it could be like, yeah, that's great, that's what we need in this town, but it's not really feasible because we can't do that. But what we could say is, okay, people want this community gathering space and, you know, the the ideal thing is this, but we can do X within what we have. And maybe that's a long-term plan for us, so. But I think that that's why I said that I just really, it just really needs to be made sure that these are the priorities of our town. Of the people, people who partic- participated in this process and that there's evidence that there's evidence of that, because some of the things that are gonna come up could be controversial. Right? Some could could misalign with what somebody's personal beliefs are on the council and we wanna make sure that we know that it's, that is, this is the people in the community who participate in the process um stated, stated what they want.
Yeah, and I think that's why going back to this plan too and making sure any sort of goals that they're recommending is a reflection, like you were saying, and um, of what the public said, either through the meetings, the surveys. Um, because I think that makes your job and the planning board job a little easier. The, um, so I don't want goals just thrown out there for the sake of, oh, I think this is what M A P C wants. Um, and again, it could be something that is in another community or something that's worked for them in another community, which is great. Um, but I just don't want um, you know, goals just thrown out there, um, that there's really no basis for it either. So I think that's.
I I know that it will be, I do know that that will be scrutinized. So we wanna make sure that it is that it is based on a community reflect, a reflection of our community or the people who, or at least the people who participated, not necessarily a factor in the community, but the people who participate in the process.
Right, right. I I mean, uh, so I think we're all in agreement and I think um do we need to limit them to ten goals per category? And that way they could then prioritize them by the number of, by the, the strength of the the survey responses or however they're measuring it. Um, uh, that, that might help. I do think um, they're going to want to have in an appendix, the you know, like the, how how they've lined up the goals versus survey input, so you can see that five hundred and fifty-eight people respond to say preserve natural resources, you know, which goes exactly to everyone's comments and these are town-driven goals. So you have that in the appendix, but then you would say here are the ten town-driven goals, the, um, and I do like how they frame them as community consensus goals, but they, they definitely have mashed up uh high priority versus moderate. Um, and that tends to get a little, little blurry.
And too, like I, you know, maybe some of these consensus, these goals that we're seeing, it is true, maybe that's what our survey results said and um, but for me, reading that right now, there's no way I can really tell that by what I'm reading. So I'm wondering, once they clean it up, we'll be able to pull, like, at least I'm hoping, things that maybe seem not really, that were community-driven based on the facts um, that did the surveys. Um, for me, it's just really, this just needs, half of it needs to be eliminated and uh beefed up um with more substance and with those goals you were saying, Theo.
And I think the goals need to be specific.
Yeah.
And you know, that whole smart thing, specific, actionable, with a specific, actionable.
Measurable.
Measurable. Specific, yeah, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant.
You're forgetting time back, yeah, yeah. But let's be honest, we all hate those goals, right?
Well, I I like, I like being able to measure everything, so.
Yeah, no, I I I agree with you.
I just, I just thought some of the goals were just like so lofty. I'm like, you know, we're world peace. Yep, we all do.
Right.
But I like your idea of maybe, I mean, what I, because some chapters, you know, I think there's some topics that are more definitely we had more um engagement, if you will, so there may be more goals for those. But, yeah, let me think about that a little more, but I think that's a good idea, uh, Theo, about like each chapter, like we'd like this many goals um, with strategies and and timelines and things like that. Um, with strategies and, and timelines and things like that. And who's in charge of it?
Yeah. Do we have any, um, I'm, I'm curious about like how we want to, it seems like the plan might need to acknowledge that some things are still undecided, right? Um, we think about, um, some of the, some of this about Wakefield being car-dependent versus trying to find other ways of increasing, reducing car dependency. Like that tends to be a, a flashpoint, um, talking about housing typologies and affordability can be a flashpoint. I don't, I don't know. Is there any way to say, you know, there are, there are broader community goals around these kinds of topics? And we have to do a lot more thinking to think through how we might find, find the, how we might balance these, uh, the, the sides of, two sides of this coin.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just thinking too, Theo, in my head, and I hope this comes out the way I'm thinking about it in my head is, you know, a lot of these chapters kind of intertwine with each other. So Wakefield is, it says is very car-dependent. And I don't think a lot of people wanna give up their cars. But then you look at the climate and sustainability chapter and it's very important to people. So where do we kind of meet? Like where, what should our goal be at the community to kind of meet those two things too? And I don't think there's really that overlap between the, the, and I don't know what that, what that would look like, but, um, seems like it's really broken into the different chapters, but there's a lot of overlap as well. Um, so does that make sense? Does that make sense to people? Yeah. And things that we need to strive for too, just because, um, you know, people feel a certain way now. I think there's definitely things that we should be striving for. You know, um, that should be goals. Um, so.
Well, I think like, you know, one example might be less car-dependent, you know, create less car dependency, but understanding that people don't wanna give up their cars. So how can the two?
Different options, yeah, coexist, yeah. Or having alternative modes.
How can we make it so that, um, we can achieve both of those things?
Yeah.
I think it's possible.
Well, isn't that also where prioritization comes in?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, and M A P C should have ideas on this. This is not, this shouldn't be the first time that they hear those.
No, I know.
Contradicting things. So, yeah, I mean, this, this should be thought through for sure.
Um, well, thank you, Theo, and, uh, Anne. Jen, I think once we have a cleaner document with more, um, clear goals and strategies, I think it would make it easier for both the council and planning board to feel more comfortable with, um, being the ones to kind of adopt it, um, and make the decision. Um, but we're definitely not there yet, so. But that should be our, our ultimate goal with this plan for adoption. Um, Julie.
Hi again, just really quickly, um, yeah, I was looking at that, um, Americal Civic Center thing and what's not, this is why we haven't gone into the facts yet. That was actually gifted to us from the state for a dollar. And it's actually a war memorial. It's named after the Americal Division, which fought in World War Two and in Vietnam. So I, I read that. I was like, well, that's another layer of stuff that we might have to go through, like how accessible are these ideas? Based on what these buildings are in our community, but we can deal with that later. I was thinking about what Christina said earlier, um, as a, as a teacher as well. Visually, every page had a header and a footer. And I don't know if it needed it because there are so many other things on the pages. I, I found visually, I agreed with what, um, Christina said. And there was something I wanted to, oh, when Amy was talking about the organization of it. When I was tutoring college kids and they would give me a document like this, I would say, you know, you know, there's so many in my head. I would be like, oh, my God, this is all over the place. It's an A A D D type of presentation. How can I make my point clear to the person that they need to fix it up? But I would say, how would you organize it with an index? And that would force them to think, okay, I've got, like, think of a cookbook. When you use a cookbook and you know you have one ingredient at home, and let's say it's orange, um, I don't know, some sort of food flavoring. You go to the back of the index and you look at, you look up that one item you have, and therefore you find seven recipes that use it. That forces somebody to think, okay, I've got it in eight places in my document. How can I bring them all together? So maybe if you use, it's just like a piece of psychology that might help. How could you put everything together? So that you could actually formulate an index. I'm not saying they need to formulate an index, but it might help them frame their thinking when you're asking for all this stuff that's all over the place. A more cohesive way.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I jump on that point? Um, like if we were to look at the table of contents, are there things that we would tell them to move into an appendix or is that something that would be helpful?
Honestly, I, I didn't look through it enough to even think of that because it was so visually overwhelming.
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would seem like, I, I, it sounded like we were starting to, to fixate on starting with the consensus goals, then recommendations, and then like key issues and opportunities. Um, and maybe like either the beginning or the end of that is a summary of existing conditions and and would, um, I think that maybe it would be enough to frame things, is that? And I'm now repeating what folks have said.
No, I think that's a good point. Chris.
You're right. Um, sorry if my mind is a little jumbo. My daughter came in to tell me she was brushing her teeth with mustache, so I didn't know what to think of that afterward. Um, hang on, where did I write down my notes? Ah, okay, so not in any specific order, but Julie, your cookbook analogy actually make a lot of sense to me. So this is more of a feeling. The way it is organized so that things can be fine would be very helpful. What we got is almost like a recipe that we can find online these days where there's like three pages where the people's like story. When all you really want is the ingredients and the instruction and it's buried in there somewhere and right, to find the bit that you need. So I, you know, when you say that, so that kind of played off in my head why it was kind of annoying to go through that document. Um, but more important, ah, goals, priorities. Um, and you mentioned SMART goals. I don't know how likely it is that we can get M A P C to put those in a SMART, SMART goal format. I think people don't like them because it kind of forced people into thinking about all the little things that come together. But if somehow a little bit of the structure can be introduced in at least a description of the goals, I think that would definitely help because that defined the goal a little bit more than just a grand concept that doesn't have any immediate relevance to, to what we're trying to do. So maybe that is something we can explore. Erin, I was gonna ask you, is it hard timeline for this to be released to the public for comment?
Uh, there was, but there's gonna be a discussion that we had tomorrow, so I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay, alright, so.
The public comment was supposed to open tomorrow, but that's not gonna be the case.
Yeah. I guess the other thing I was gonna ask you and maybe the group, right? What can we do to help? Because we make so many comments, you take so many notes and then, you know, it's just you and Jen trying to go back and forth with them, which doesn't seem like it's feasible, right? I mean, I'm not downgrading what you can do, but it's a lot of work.
Um, I think, and I think that's a good, nice transition unless people have more to add, because I know you've all, you know, I have three pages worth of notes here to kind of back up what Jen and I were, were feeling today. And not to say that it makes me feel better that this, this document is kind of a mess. Uh, but it makes me feel better that we're not the only ones that feel this way. Um, and so, um, I think really the next steps for us is I'm going to be, um, having a conversation with Carlos, um, letting him know that, and honestly, I'm probably just gonna tell him we are a little disappointed. Um, letting him know that it did feel a lot of copy and paste. The organization was poorly done. It's very hard to read. Um, if I read this, you know, as a, a document to work on in my department, I would have nothing to take from it. Um, and so I want him to go back and I wanna send him some examples of like what Amy was saying, what I saw with the North Reading, as well as the examples of what other organizations have done, like NADIC and Norton. And let him know that this is more along the lines of what we're looking for. Um, we need to lose a lot of the repetitiveness. Um, I need to make sure that the goals and strategies reflect what was discussed at the public meetings. And I do feel like that falls on him. Um, you know, I'll, I'll keep plugging through, set aside an hour of my day to go through and make sure that the data and information is correctly, like you mentioned, because, um, I think that would have happened again with anyone. Because if you, if you don't know the history or don't know if something changed, you know, you're just going based on what you read. Um, so I think that falls on me, but, um, I would like for him to also work on an executive summary. Because even Anne and I talked earlier this week and that was kind of brought up as well, um, to be added to this document. Um, but for me, it's to have a conversation of that this whole document needs to be reformatted. And if I need to bring in some higher-up folks, um, in regards to them not completing their work, then that's what's gonna have to be done. Um, if there, you know, I am going to, and I hope you all don't mind here, I won't put names to it. But I'm gonna consolidate a number of things that you all said today, um, to let them know that it is, you know, um, a group. Um, you know, we've come to this together as a group with these, uh, thoughts. And so, um, it's not just me and Jen that feel this way. It's, it's a group as a whole that represent many different, uh, people in Wakefield. And so, um, you know, I hope you guys all don't mind that I, I took notes on that. Um, what I can do is after I have that conversation, I can follow up with this group and let you know if there is anything. I think my one ask is to, if you can stomach it, to continue to go through the document and pick away at anything that you may seem, seem that inaccurate. Um, things that you feel like if you did look at the data, doesn't add true to the goals or stay true to the goals that he has now. I think that would be really helpful. Again, I don't have a time um, for you on that, but you don't need to rush in a week and read two hundred and fourteen pages or forty pages. Uh, but that would be really helpful. And, um, and when I have a better idea of, uh, when I have another document, I would love to have another meeting like this, if you guys wouldn't mind. But right now, I think those are kind of my next steps. Um, Jen, is there anything you'd like that? Oh, John, you have your, Chris, did you want to add more? Your hands still up, sorry. You good? Okay.
I, I am good, sorry, but I, you said if we continue to go through, continue to make comment, or how do you want that to be shared? Just email or is there a Google sheet that we can fill in?
That's the point. I wish we could have a shareable document that we could all write on, but since we are, um, would be a quorum, uh, you just can email me your comments. That would be really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a folder saved on my inbox where I've been kind of just feeding things in there. Go ahead, John.
Uh, just a quick question. This might tie in with your conversation with M A P C. If, um, if at some place, at some point after this meeting, if you and Jen come to an agreement that there's a format that you like, um, you know, if you wanna share that format around, because then I was thinking of like taking this chart and kind of reorganizing it into a format that would, I would think would be more readable. But of course, there's a lot of different opinions tonight on what, what makes the best format. So if you wanna take, if that is as helpful to you and the process for deciding on what format you want M A P C to follow. Um, and then we could, you know, look at whatever template document that you and M A P C negotiate might be helpful to take that next step.
Yeah, and I think that would be helpful to us too. I think Jen and I kind of looked at different formats. I have one that I kind of like. Um, I think, uh, was it Christina who brought up the point too about, um, accessibility too? Like you're right, that, there's, yeah. But this is not, I can see pretty well and I can't, I feel like I have ADHD after reading them. Like just all over the place. I don't know what's going on. Um, and so, um, I think Jen and I can kind of look at them and kind of make a decision and maybe send it to this group and kind of see what you guys think. But also if you've come across any that you really like, feel free to send them our way as well. Um, I think that would be really helpful. So John, before you get ahead of yourself, I would hold off and then once we decide on a format and what makes the most sense, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna start throwing examples around and documents to you. But, uh, yeah, if you come to that point where you, you reach a consensus on the format that you like, then, you know, reorganizing one of these chapters might be a useful. One or more might be a useful exercise to getting a useful final product.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Julie?
Just remember, Erin, we, we had you speak to him about his style of emailing us. Do you remember that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So he's heard this before and honestly, I, I know it's tough. I used to have to critique people's work. And I know it's really hard and you don't wanna hurt feelings, but there's no way he hasn't heard all this before, based on sent us.
Hence why I took over emailing. Hopefully mine, you can read mine a little better. Um, yeah, no, I think, I'm not, I'm not too worried about it. It was more like, not that I don't wanna rush a product, but you're disappointed when you have this thought in your head of when something's gonna be done. And it's, it's not, or having this document.
It's, it's not professional and it can't be posted.
No, I know. And I guess that's what I'm saying. I was expecting something a little better than what we're dealing with. I expected there to be some edits and feedback, but not to the extent of reworking the whole document.
It looks like some people tried to help him.
Yeah, and I think that was a really good point that there's a few different styles of writing, which it shouldn't be like that either.
It seems like people knew they needed to help him.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
I did, um, sorry, this is Carol again. I did wanna ask one question that was, uh, posed earlier in the evening. Um, about who ultimately makes the decision? Uh, who, you know, that I think it was at the very beginning when Jennifer, you were speaking. Who makes that decision on that goal that's included or that is the goal for the town? There is, the, there is responsibility from the town to probably decipher some of the information that's coming in and it, and it to me, it kind of falls, I think, to you, Erin, in your position. Um, but I was curious to, to sort of, sort of get your feedback in regards to if you were to get a product that was a little more organized and better, you would have to make that ultimate decision that what was included or not included. Is, is that where?
I mean, I would, yeah, I mean, I would kind of be the one that, and not, you know, and share it around with different department heads too. But I would wanna make sure that it stayed true to what the facts were or what the data that we got from people. That it's not just something that they think we should, you know, just do, you know, out of nowhere. I think it needs to be backed up by the fact of the surveys and public meetings.
And then what are they new kind of working with the town departments to kind of conclude, you know, the end product at the end, right?
Well, then I, yeah, and then I would go to the planning board and town council where they could review it as well to make sure that they are comfortable with, um, the goals that are put forth as well. Um, and ultimately they're the ones that are adopting it. But yes, I would think the work would fall within my office to make sure that it aligns with what was said.
Um, but does that answer your question, Jennifer, in regards to where, why you were asking those questions? I was just trying to decipher a little bit more about.
Yeah, so my, my question was like, again, I'll go back to this document, right? So this is Norton, Norton, Norton has a goal that they want to adopt the Community Preservation Act. That's a very specific goal. It's measurable. They are, they wanna do it. So who decided that they want to, someone had, there was a consensus somewhere that Norton is gonna adopt the Community Preservation Act. So for example, here, and I, you know, and I, I don't see any that are, a, a lot of these are very non-specific, like one of the goals seems to be to preserve natural resources. Of course, that's fantastic. I feel like maybe it needs to be a little bit more specific. But if I were to choose a specific one from here, um, which I haven't really found a great one, but it, who, who says yes? Norton's gonna, am I?
So, yeah, so for an example, I think what we need from this plan is, which we already have this going on. But say in this study, or I'm sorry, this public process, people are saying we need more affordable units within town, or we need more senior housing in town. Um, the recommendation or strategy from M A P C, even though they might not say like you need more affordable housing in town, would be like, we recommend you, uh, create an affordable housing trust. And the information would be there to back that up because people are saying they'd like to see more affordable housing and senior housing. And for me, I'd be able to read them, be like, okay, that's why they came to that idea of why they recommend for us to create this affordable housing trust. Of why they recommend for us to create this affordable housing trust, you know, it's not gonna be spelled out, you know, uh, if that may, is a little clearer. I think that would make my job a little easier too, as I go through, like right now, I don't know what I'm reading, I'll be completely honest.
So it's the way, so it it keeps falling back to M A P C to decipher the information in a way that is readable. That will help answer the questions that you can then validate. Are the goals, uh, will validate that that the goals that came from the process, and then you can validate the goals, um, okay.
I'll be honest, I couldn't get up in front of the town council and say, oh, they said this will because sixty-five percent, and the goal could be like, like Jen's that preserve open. Space, okay, that's great, but what are you doing to preserve open space, um, and so I need more actionable type goals. And strategies, cause I feel like I don't have that now.
Right, I think that's absolutely something you can go back to the consultant.
Yeah.
And indicate that they need to do in this executive sub area, whatever the product is, um, and that it would be at their cost.
Yep, thank you.
I think if if, I mean, I'm I'm, I'm assuming you wanna align it with the 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 scope and the can, they had an agreement with the town. And indicated specific requirements, you use that as your negotiating tool.
Thank you.
Pushback, that's how we do it. I see Christopher uses same language, I'm consultant, I think you look at your consultant as well, so you push back, um. It's expected.
Yeah, thank you. Julie.
Bummer, Erin, you just summarized everything we were all trying to say for almost the past two hours, we don't know how to do what he didn't do for us. We gave him all of our information, I was hoping he would tell us what to do with it. And he, and he didn't.
That's the missing piece. And don't get me wrong, that data is very cool to look at.
The data, but we gave him the data, what did he do with the data? He typed up our data, but now he didn't tell us the next steps. At all.
With lots of dashes, typed it with lots of dashes.
Um, well, I, you know, if. This conversation was very, and discussion was very helpful to me on next steps and to make sure that we're, we're feeling all the right ways about this. And again, it was such a quick turnaround too, of when we got the document until us talking now, so um, I appreciate you guys taking the time. Um, I definitely will take everything that you guys mentioned today, uh, clean it up for myself to. Um, and then I'll be having a discussion um, with M A P C as well as internal folks here about next steps. Um, cause again, I will not be putting this out until I feel comfortable with the document, and I can a hundred percent right now, say I'm not comfortable with the document. Um, and I will definitely keep you guys in the loop of where I stand, I would love to have a meeting like this again, once we get a new draft. Um, and before I push anything out, um, so I'll, I'll definitely keep you. I'll email you, I don't wanna repeat myself, now I'm repeating myself like the document, so, any last comments?
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you, I really have high hopes that we will have a document that works, um, it just might take some time to get there, but. I'd rather have a good document that takes a while than a poorly written document that we can just put out there, so.
Yeah, we also appreciate your honesty, Erin and Jennifer, through the process as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
All right, well, I hope you all have a good night.
I'm sorry that you both have to spend so much extra time, I mean, this is, this is requiring a lot of extra time on your part too.
Yeah, for sure.
So, thank you.
It's my job, it's Jen's, but Jen's the one that catches all the grammatical stuff, I mean, she is our communications director, so. Um, but, but thank you.
And don't forget, you're doing a great job, so make sure you remember that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, have a good night, guys.
You started a very good process, we'll finish it well too.